You ready? Meeting come to order, please. Roll call, press your present button, please. Record it. Staff, announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have several announcements. First of all, you'll note in front of you a revised site plan for item 19. And it was just a minor matter within that site plan as far as a zoning ordinance reference, but we wanted to correct the record as well as we could. Secondly, you'll also note that there's a revised report on item 22. At least in the packets, we had, we failed to duplex side two of that report. And just out of an abundance of caution, we put that one back in front of you. Item three, we have a bit of an unusual request in the sense that you will note on your agenda, we have under item, under item 20, we have a preliminary plat for Falls Grove Phase Two. And under item 24, a final plat review for Falls Grove Section Two. It is generally not our practice to hear a preliminary and a final. This is unusual in the sense that this is a minor revision to the preliminary plat. We felt like it was not out of the question to hear them at the same time. And we would like to do that unless there's any objections from this body.
Any objections? Done?
Thank you. Couple of things, we've got a couple of opportunities next month. You'll be hearing more about this, but we have tentatively scheduled a discussion, a training session on traffic and how the traffic sheds work in terms of the zoning ordinance. For, prior to the meeting, which I believe is going to be on, I believe is going to be on November 12th, we'll do that around five o'clock. Once we get that lined up, we will, we will let you know affirmatively and we will feed you that night. So that will be something to keep in mind. Also, on November 5th as well, November 5th, the week before, we are working towards scheduling a joint workshop with the Planning Commission and the County Commission to discuss rural retreats. Several months ago, we passed an amendment to the rural retreat. And at the, at the County Commission, at the, at the September meeting, it was pretty apparent that there was a general misunderstanding of what we were trying to accomplish with that. And we thought the best thing to do is to bring everybody in at one time and go over what the rural retreats are and what we've been attempting to do with them. Again, that, on the other hand, we will not feed you. So, and finally, it is my sad duty to remind you all that we have, that we have, unprecedented, we've lost another member of the Planning Commission. Mr. Brian Sanders passed away a couple of weeks ago. He left behind a wife and two children. And he left behind a great number of friends. And he contributed to this body. And unless there was any kind of objections, I think a moment of silence would be in order at this point.
Thank you. Consideration of minutes of September 10, 2015. Any corrections? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Any openness?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Consideration of consent agenda. You will note on your consent, there are items 23 and 25 are still on our regular agenda, but they will be considered under consent. Anyone wishing to remove an item from consent for separate consideration, please say so now. Eighteen. Anyone else? Anyone? We'll take the balance of the agenda as a whole. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One thing before I do, do begin this. We do have embedded in this, and you have reports there, we have, there are, we have added three deferrals into the consent agenda as opposed to what has, what has been listed on, on, within the reports you have. You have those revised reports in front of you. Short story is, this is an unusual month. We, we had worked off the premise that the County Commission would be meeting before the County, the Planning Commission in order to accept those roads in the county road system. And this, this is one of the few months that does not occur. So we will defer to the next month's meeting. So those roads will be, will drop the bonds once those roads are part of the county road system. But I'm sorry, I should have handled that in the announcements. At any rate, beginning with item three, Arrington Retreat, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $185,000. Recommendation, defer to the November meeting. Item four, Belchase, Section Two, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $66,000. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of six months. Item five, Brenz Valley Addition, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $75,000. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of one year. Excuse me. Item six, Brenz Valley Addition, Section Two, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $82,000. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of six months with a review in three months. Item seven, Dolan's Commercial Review, Venue, Maintenance Bond for Landscaping, $2,400. Recommendation, release the bond. Item eight, Falls Grove, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Wastewater Treatment and Disposal Systems, $74,639. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of one year. Item nine, Falls Grove, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $80,861. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of one year. Item 10, Falls Grove, Section One, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $575,000. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of six months. Item 11, Genango Farms, Maintenance Bond for Landscaping, $5,400. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 12, Hillsborough Cove, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $47,700. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of seven months and require completion. Item 13, Kings Chapel, Section Six, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $82,500. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of one year. Item 14, Silverstream Farms, Section 6A, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $40,000. Recommendation, defer to the November 2015 meeting. Item 15, Silverstream Farms, Section 6B, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $50,000. Recommendation, defer to November 2015 meeting. Item 16, Stags Leap, Section 2B, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $100,000. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of one year. Item 17, Stags Leap, Section 3A, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $6,000. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of one year. Item 16 has been pulled from the consent agenda, dropping down to under final plats. Item 23, Final Plat Review for the Grove, Section Seven, containing 68 lots on 67.71 acres located off Arno Road in the 2nd Voting District. This plat is in order and staff recommends approval. The following stipulations. One, the posting of performance bond amount of $550,000 for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. This amount is a reduced amount based on work completed. Item two, posting of performance bond, the amount of $275,000 for wastewater collection system. Item three, the posting of performance bond, the amount of $280,000 for water improvements as specified by Millcroft and Utility District. Four, execution of stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And five, submission of the final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of this plat. Dropping down now to item 25, Final Plat Review for Silverstream Farms, Section 4F, containing 14 lots and 4.81 acres located off Rocky Fourth Road in the 5th Voting District. This plat is in order and staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. One, the posting of performance bond, the amount of $50,000 for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. This bond amount is based on work to date. Item two, posting of performance bond, the amount of, for water improvements in the amount of $30,000 as specified by Nolan'sville College Grove Utility District. Three, posting of performance bond for sewer improvements, the amount of $14,500 as specified by Nashville Water and Sewer Service, Metro Nashville Water and Sewer Services. Item four, posting of performance bond for landscaping improvements in the amount of $20,680. Five, execution and recording of stormwater maintenance agreement, submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And six, submission of two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and the recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Since we pulled eighteen, let's go ahead and vote on, well, that'll mess her up, I suspect. We can do that? Any questions on the consent agenda with the exception of item 18, which we'll take as a separate item? Any comments, questions? Motion? Motion made in seconded. Prepare to vote. Record a vote. Whoa, record a vote. Motion carries. Now for agenda item 18. Staff?
Chairman, staff has visited the site and noted that improvements are being made. Roadway and drainage repairs are being completed and asphalt placement is scheduled to begin. Staff recommends that this bond be extended for a period of six months. The buildout for this section is at 58 percent. However, the bond is at the end of the bond period.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner?
My question on that was just my education. The, the bond, is it the end of it? They extend the bond now for another six months? So how does that work?
When we say the bond is at the end of the bond period, our regulations state 80 percent buildout of bond can be considered for release or, or we can ask that all improvements be made and completed. 80 percent are at the end of the bond period. We have a minimum of about five or six years when we consider a bond to be at the end of the bond period.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
We, we were looking at six months because we're hopeful and have been told that the final surface mix would be placed within the next month or so. And so we would be able to bring it back sooner than a year.
Was this six months at the same amount? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Don, you good?
I'm good. I move we accept staff's recommendation.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, back to the agenda. Oh, agenda item 19, Non-Residential Site Plan Review for Triple Star Farms, Rural Retreat Extensive on 53.86 acres located off of Wilson Pike in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
The applicant is requesting approval of a rural retreat extensive use in the Rural Development One District. The property is approximately 54 acres in size and is located on Wilson Pike. Parcels surrounding the property in question range in size from approximately six acres to approximately 197 acres and are used for agricultural and/or residential purposes. The applicant is proposing to construct a 6,522 square foot building and utilize the existing 4,200 square foot house for use as a wedding and event center. In addition to wedding, uses that would typically be permitted with a rural retreat include receptions, outdoor wedding events, family reunions, conferences, and other similar events. The existing house will also be used to accommodate up to 10 guests in three bedrooms. The property is relatively secluded with the bulk of the proposed event activity taking place approximately 900 feet away from neighboring residential structures. The use is compliant with the All Natural Resource Protections as outlined in Article 13 of the Zoning Ordinance. Water services provided by Millcroft and Utility District and wastewater is handled via onsite septic. At the time of this writing, the Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management is evaluating the request. The Tennessee Department of Transportation has approved the connection to Wilson Pike for the use. Bulk and performance standards have been met, as have the specific requirements associated with rural retreat extensive uses. The submitted landscaping plan has been reviewed and approved. The site plan is in order and pending approval of the septic facilities by the Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management by meeting date, staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. Number one, the posting of a performance bond for landscaping in the amount of $124,150 and execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. One additional item, Mr. Chairman, the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved the request.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Comments? Thoughts? Motion? Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 20 is preliminary plat review for Falls Grove Phase One, revised, containing 85 lots on 67.93 acres located off of U. Daley Covington Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
The preliminary plat for this phase was previously approved at the August 2014 meeting. The proposed plat is consistent in layout with that which was previously approved with only a small change to the exterior boundary of the phase, which exchanges equal amounts of open space between this phase and a future phase. As a result, the preliminary plat must be reconsidered at this time. As part of the previous approval, the applicant had requested a design speed of 25 miles per hour for a section of Edgemore Drive and a right-of-way width of 40 feet in order to locate sidewalks outside of the right-of-way. Staff remains in support of these requests and recommends approval of this preliminary plat. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the following items must be addressed. One, establishment of a performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control. Two, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements as specified by Millcroft and Utility District. Three, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Four, submission and approval of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Five, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And six, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Questions of staff? Comments? Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Fair to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 21, Preliminary Plat Review for Vineyard Valley Phase One, containing 26 lots on 52.61 acres located off of U. Daley Covington Road in the 2nd Voting District. Staff?
A concept plan for this development was approved at the August 2015 meeting. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for the first phase of the development, which consists of 26 lots, the wastewater treatment and disposal system, and approximately 13 acres of open space. The preliminary plat is consistent in layout with that depicted on the concept plan. At their October 7th meeting, the County Highway Commission will consider the design plans for the off-site roadway improvements along U. Daley Covington Road. As was mentioned at the concept plan stage, the applicant is requesting a right-of-way width of 40 feet in order to accommodate sidewalks outside the right-of-way. Staff is in support of this request. Pending approval of the design plans for the off-site roadway improvements by the Highway Commission, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the final, following items must be addressed. Number one, prior to submittal of final plat, the off-site improvements to U. Daley Covington Road as specified in the Traffic Impact Analysis Review Letter from the county's traffic engineering consultant must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. Two, prior to final plat submittal, a zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed wastewater treatment and disposal system. Prior to the issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following. A, a letter from TDEC indicating that the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system was installed and is functioning. B, as-built drawings showing the location of all system components and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that the non-traditional wastewater and disposal system was constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications. C, a letter from the owner utility providing, provider indicating that it has accepted the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system and is currently operating same. And D, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $100,800 for the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system as specified by the county's wastewater consultant. Number three, prior to consideration of final plat approval, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat. Four, establishment of a performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control. Five, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Millcroft and Utility District. Six, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Seven, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Eight, dedication of right-of-way 30 feet off the center line of U. Daley Covington Road. Nine, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And 10, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I would note that the Highway Commission did in fact approve I would, I would mention that the Highway Commission did in fact approve the, the road plans as specified within the report.
Okay, thanks. Any comments, questions? Thoughts? Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 22, Preliminary Plat Review for Water Leaf, containing 22 lots on 90, excuse me, 49.14 acres located off of Gozy Hill Road in the 12th Voting District. Staff?
A concept plan for this development was approved at the June 2015 meeting. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for the development, which consists of 22 lots and approximately 15 acres of open space. The preliminary plat is generally consistent in layout with that depicted on the concept plan. As identified in the concept plan review, a number of items are to be addressed at this juncture, including submission of road drainage and erosion control plans and identification of lots requiring engineered site plans. These items have been sufficiently addressed. At their October 7th meeting, the County Highway Commission will consider the design plans for the off-site roadway improvements along Gozy Hill Road. The Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved this request. Pending approval of the design plans for the off-site roadway improvements by the County Highway Commission, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the following items must be addressed. One, prior to submittal of a final plat, the turn line improvements on Gozy Hill Road must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. Prior to consideration of final plat approval, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat. Establishment of a, of a performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control. Four, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Millcroft and Utility District. Five, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Six, dedication of roadway 25 feet off the center line of Gozy Hill Road. Seven, final approval of all septic systems for each lot from Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management. Eight, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And nine, submission of the approved final plat, plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate, Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat. One additional note, Mr. Chairman, the County Highway Commission has approved this request.
Thank you. You did good for your first time. Any comments? Questions? Motion? Motion made in seconded and thirded and fourthed. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 23 was on consent. Agenda item 24 is final plat review for Falls Grove, Section Two, consisting of 85 lots on 67.93 acres located off of U. Daley Covington Road in the 5th Voting District. This is the one we did the revised preliminary plat on just a few minutes ago. Staff?
The preliminary plat governing this section of the development was approved at the August 2014 meeting and is included on this agenda for a minor revision to the phase boundary. The applicant is now requesting final plat approval for Section Two, which contains 85 lots and approximately 33 acres of open space. The final plat is consistent in layout with that depicted on the approved preliminary plat. Existing woodlands, which will be retained within the open space, satisfies the buffer requirements of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, a landscaping bond is not necessary. The plat is in order and staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. One, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $675,000 for roads drainage and erosion control. Two, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $231,300. I said that wrong. Let's start that again. $231,300 for the wastewater collection system. My apologies. Three, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $330,000 for water improvements as specified by Millcroft and Utility District. Four, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And five, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions? Yeah, the pro screwed it up.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I don't normally read dollars.
I thought that was your salary. Questions, comments? Motion? Did you get who was first and second there? Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 25 was on consent. Agenda item 26 is approval of the Planning Commission meeting schedule for 2016. Before we discuss that, where are we on our revised meeting time discussion?
Well, this is one of those that all boats, all boats rise. And in this case, we, we found with, when we polled the Planning Commission, that not all our membership could make a revised time, so.
Revised to where?
Well, to, to, I think we talked about five o'clock or 5:30. We opted, we opted, we opted to recommend that we keep it at seven o'clock.
So is that the end of discussion?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. That's fine. I just, I just want to make sure I cleaned it up. Good. Okay. Anybody object to our schedule here? Why do you do this, anyway? Do we have to have this approved by us?
We have historically, yes.
Oh, well.
And also gives us a chance.
That makes it, that makes it good.
Well, John, this makes sure you can write it all down.
Right.
The other part, too, it also gives us a chance to kind of plan ahead because invariably, we're going to have a date tucked in there.
Any discussion?
It might be a holiday.
There are motion? There are second, I'm sorry. I'm going deaf. Any further discussion? I started saying all in favor of. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Don, you're still not confirmed. There you go. There you go. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Agenda item 27, update on the Save Rural Franklin and Save Old Hillsborough Road versus Williamson County. Lawsuit. Counselor?
Well, we're not going to go into closed session because I'm just wanting to give you all a brief update, um, because it's been a while since we talked about it. Back in December, um, the judgment that was in our favor, the, um, the petitioners, the neighborhood groups filed a notice of appeal with the Court of Appeals. And so since that time, we have been filing documents with the Court of Appeals, and all the briefs were filed this summer and this fall. Um, September 18th, we had our oral argument before the Court of Appeals in Nashville. It's a three-judge panel, and we are just awaiting an opinion. Um, I've seen those take sometimes a month, sometimes six months, so we never know. But the panel that we had, um, I have noticed in some of their other opinions, they're pretty good about turning them around in a month or two, so we may hear something soon. Um, I just didn't send out all the briefs because they filed a brief, and then we filed a brief, the developers filed a brief, and they replied to our brief. Anyway, I didn't want to kill that many trees, but if y'all need something to help you sleep at night and you would like a copy, I'd be glad to send you our 50-page brief. Um, but as soon as we do get the opinion, I will let you all know, and I will probably send you a copy of that with some sort of indication of what next. Hopefully, nothing if it goes in our favor, but that's all I wanted to just let you all know real quick.
Did you ever find out why lawyers call them briefs when they're 42 pages long?
No, but they limited us to just the 50 pages now.
I asked her that, she couldn't answer. No, she wouldn't answer. That, that's a better way to put it. Anything else? You done, Counselor?
That's it.
Motion? Sir?
You're talking about our reporter for the first evening.
Yeah. I fired her so many times.
I know, that's why.
She didn't know which way she's going. Any other comments?
Move adjournment.
Thank you. We are adjourned.